This is our Budget Workshop Meeting, North Bradford Town Council, Tuesday, March 23, 2021, at 7:00 PM, the North Bradford Town Hall, Town Council Chambers. Michelle, I'd like to start with a roll call, please.
Mary Willem.
Here.
Decade Dimeos Antana.
Here.
Counselor Angelo.
Here.
Counselor Diner.
Here.
Counselor Doody.
Here.
Counselor Downs.
Here.
Counselor Quannan.
Here.
Counselor Gold.
Here.
And Counselor Fuchia.
Here.
Okay, next we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the body. To the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom, you can leave now. I have my two shots. Oh, poor him, I got a card. All right, let's start with the budget overview for 2021, 2022, operational and capital budget, please.
First, I'd like to just thank the council for taking the time, as always every year, for all the support that you've obviously given to the PD over the last years, and certainly for the new building coming, which is, as we talked about last week, you know, a huge success for us, and proud of this town and where we're at and the direction we're going for, for all the thanks for all of you guys and all the work everybody does. So, I'm sure you'll find tonight that the chief, deputy chief, myself, and Victor, and the board of police commissioners are putting, I feel, a good, strong budget together as we always do. We want to come in front of you guys to give you a concern, but strong budget, and we'll roll right through it. So, I'll let the deputy chief start off, if you'd like, and we'll move forward. And you guys got a full plate tonight. Thank you again.
Thanks, David.
So, just piggyback off Vice Chairman Plumb, it's been, I don't have to tell you as sitting up here as counselors, what a year it's been from where we sat last year, when we went in April on Zoom. For a year, for the start of us, it was a year of what if, you know, what if this happens? What if that happens? Where are we getting our next set of PPP? Where's this, where's that? Then when we thought we all had it together, then the storms hit, right? And we started all over here with more of this, and more planning, I think, and more aggressive planning in the last year than I think I want to see for the rest of my career. So, let's hold that's behind us. But to get back to the hard work, I think this budget shows the hard work the commission has put in and the support of the council to where we are now. Through the up years, we came with a lot of asks, and the council committed to those asks and delivered, and I think this budget's reflective of the benefits of those painful asks of the years. So, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start with the communications budget.
Sure.
So, the communications budget, the commission is proposing 3.34 increase, a percent increase. That comes to about $20,460. And if you look throughout your packet, a culmination of that, approximately about $12,000 of that $20,460 is due to contractual increases in the 101 account, the full-time salary is about $700, $800 in contractual increases for the dispatchers. And then the overtime costs that are associated with those contractual increases that are due to their CBA, their current CBA. The rest of those increases, the overwhelming majority, are tied up in the equipment rental to the 312 account, and that has to do with the contractual agreement with Ocean Chows City Towers up on Parson Hill, and to run the fiber. And if you remember back from our previous discussions, the fiber was so important because that was the connection to fixing a number of our radio problems, at least for the short period of time. So, that's where those fees and the increases are tied up in that budget. If there's nothing that sticks out to the council there, I'd like to move on to the police budget.
How long do the police officers have to take over for the dispatcher?
So, it's varied throughout the years. At times, we've seen a large number of officers that are working in there. As you are aware, the overtime is first allotted to the civilian dispatchers, and that's by contract. If they can't fill that overtime, and obviously we need to have somebody there at the 911 center to answer the phones, then we have specially trained officers to handle those calls. So, that's, it rotates. Some years, we're high in police.
I'm just wondering if you had $12,000 in that side of the period.
Yeah, sometimes it's higher in the civilian side. So, we also have a part-timer position for the civilian dispatchers, and typically, the employee that was in that position for it didn't take a lot of those extra jobs. When that employee now takes those jobs, he's getting paid at a straight time rate. So, that's a savings in that account, which sometimes puts the balance a little bit off. It's hard to predict because that's, it's not forced, it's by choice.
How many certified bodies are there?
We have three currently that are certified with dispatch.
So, what's the increase in, I see your other contractual is up $5,000, the 320 account? Where's that coming from?
The 320 is, let's put this on this clock. So, we got the net motion, which is for the cars that connect to the, back to the PD, that's how the cars connect for the computer dispatch. You've got the MedCom cost, which is our fee to, when we need another ambulance in town or something like that, we call AMR, that's an outside agency, they find us an ambulance to respond to whatever the medical emergency is in town. So, that's a fee that we pay for. And then you've got the local data terminal fees, which went up, and those are through Horizon and our backup. So, that's where those costs are associated, just annual costs that went up for contractual.
So, pretty much all of them went up?
Yeah.
And we still are working with Ocean Chows, since the fibers went in. I did speak with Jeannie and Kenny, we'll be meeting back at the desk to talk to them about trying to resolve the whole issue of the contract and finalizing that process.
And do we need to replace dispatcher chairs every year? Because I see we have one in the budget for this year, and we have one in the budget for next year. I mean, I know they get used a lot, obviously.
24 hours a day?
So, I'm just wondering, is that just like an annual cost, we replace one every year?
That seems the one we're replacing, yeah.
Okay.
Are they going to be that expensive, right?
24/7, 360.
Yeah.
Great.
If that satisfies for the communication budget, I'll move over to the police budget. And what the commission is proposing is a 2.52 increase. That roughly breaks down to $96,955. So, if you look in your packet, I'll break this down for you where the increases are taking place. The 101 account, which is the full-time salary account, is approximately $13,200 increase, and that's due to contractual agreements that are set up between the chief, deputy chief, and secretary position, that are included this year. The overtime account counts for $37,939 increase. This was calculated by, the overtime account reflects 23 additional overtime days for the K-9 care, and per union contract, the K-9 officer receives 30 minutes per day, or about three and a half hours per week for K-9 care, that's by contract. And then, the commission increased the estimated sick time coverage from four days, that's where we calculated pre-COVID, to six days. And the logic behind this is basically due to the COVID-19 virus, which isn't going anywhere anytime soon, at least from what we're being told, especially from these short health. So, we have, throughout the year, we have experienced officers being out on quarantine for up to 24 days. They would come back sooner if they actually tested positive of the coronavirus, which is about 14 days. But through the Health Department, the state regulations, that quarantine part, and sometimes you're faced with multiple officers out at the same time, like you're losing multiple officers per month. We're uncertain if this is going to be enough to cover for the year, but we're trying to encapsulate what our prediction is. If you go to the 120 account, detention account in Social Security, that's a $33,212 increase. So, I know that shocking number of $96,955 to start, but between the 101 account, the 103, and the 120 account, the total of that increase is $84,351. Yes. Yes. So, as we move through the 202 account, which is technical supplies, we had a line item for $250, that's for K-9 supplies, and I want to remind the council that the K-9 was donated, the K-9 was actually donated by the hometown donation, and it cost $9,500. And the K-9 officer and the K-9 went to the Connecticut State Police Training Academy, and no cost to the town other than the cost of the regular salary for the officer. We also increased Narkin supply, so one of the things we found because of COVID and people being home, we were responding to an increased number of overdoses in town, which increased the cost of Narkin usage. So, until the quarantines and the restrictions start to lighten, we're predicting that's going to be a trend that we're going to see for a small period of time, with the effect of COVID-19.
Jim, how often do you guys end up using Narkin?
So, we can use it five times a week, we can use it five times a month. It's really all depending, it tends to be significant, and other towns experience it at the same time. It tends to be linked to bad mixtures that come out, if you will. You know, people that pretend that they're chemists and they want to move these illegal narcotics, you tend to see an increased amount. And the mixtures, especially to the methanol, take an increased number of doses. So, we carry four-milligram Narkin, and we're seeing sometimes that, I've used on scene, responded to a scene, to assist, that we've used four to five containers of Narkin. So, every two costs us approximately about $100, a little over $100, which we can't replicate, it costs more than that. So, that's, it varies at times, you know, from time to time, it seems like, you know, once a week until sometimes you don't use it for a month.
And they still have it at, I know, we've asked this, like, if people have insurance, you can't bill their insurance company for, I mean, you're basically saving their lives with this. But you can't, it's not allowed.
No.
Which is unbelievable, quite.
I know. Because I know that, I'm sure there's people that have multiple times that you are using Narkin.
Sure.
The repeat users.
If you go next to the 207 account, the food account, currently, we're fortunate, another great business in town, Agway, who supports the police department, police house, especially the K-9 program, they donate food for the K-9 unit. That food approximately accounts for about 50% of the food the K-9 uses. So, we put $600 in there, that's what we've calculated that it's going to cost to cover the rest of the 50% of the K-9 over the 12 months. The next line item is the heating and fuel, the 208 account, and this is based on the assumption from purchasing apartment, the cost of heating code. This letter is reduced, the assumption was 1.844, and this price is good for the entire fiscal year, 2021, 630, 2022, which is, the 209 account, motor fuel and lubricants, we stayed flat there. And the gasoline, we are, that, through the person that bid, comes up again in December, the way they do the bid now. So, we are a little bit higher than what the current bid is, but we're seeing the gas prices increase, so I think we're at a safe number. We stay where we're at, that we can encapsulate any raises in the next six months of the year, whatever the bid is that the town accepts for those six months.
And this budget is assuming that we're in the old police department for the whole fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. And to jump on that, next year, if we're in that police department, hopefully, hopefully you will, a lot of those numbers, maybe not a lot, but some of those numbers are going to be unknown for a couple of years.
Right.
Obviously, we'll do our best to hit the mark. The 301, the telephone account, we increased $600. The K-9 officer, by contract, is issued a department cell phone, he's on call 24/7, so we've been able to provide that cell phone by the current bargaining agreement. The 310 account, the equipment maintenance, for some reason, this last year, we have been going through extreme amount of tires, whether it's picking up nails on the road, getting flats, so we increased that from 50 to 60 tires, is what we're estimating to replace for next year. The uniform allowance stayed the same. The 317 account is a new account. What we did was we split up what used to be the 320 account and encapsulated all these items, and it just became too compacted, so we have the 317, which is the data processing account, which is a tighter line item. The majority of the cost in this account is from Microsoft Office, and that's the government account that we use now.
So, between the two, you're roughly flat, correct?
Yes. The 319 account saw very slight increase in association fees, that's a professional development account. The 320, which is that 317, 320 is now a split, and you saw the significant decrease because the other half is in the 317, so that's why the numbers are going to look off. And the 405 account is the technical equipment. We're not, no longer participating in the federal government 1033 program, I'm pretty not aware, that's a government surplus program, we used to get rifle, so we have to turn those back in, have to place accountability bill, and we have to vary purchase of patrol rifles for the department, so there's no need for the $250 to be part of that association. And that would be the police department budget. So, if you take out the 101 through the 120, you're looking at a 0.3% increase.
Which is about just under $15,000 without the contractuals.
What'd you say about the overtime?
The overtime account?
Yeah.
So, that was, 23 days is what it costs for the K-9, because the officer gets a half hour for care, and that's even for his days off, so he gets paid for the half hour care to take care of the K-9. And we increased the estimated sick time coverage from four days to six days for an officer.
Okay, so that's the increase that's going to happen this year?
Yes.
Correct. Because I was looking at the two, you know, ending numbers, and I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, I see what you mean now. Thanks. Chief, do you, I know that the officers are looking at, or they already have changed unions, and then there's a contract negotiation coming up. Do you guys anticipate us seeing any major changes because of that, fighting actually?
Other than, you know, I'm sure they're going to be looking for salary increases, unless anybody had, any union body comes in front of, for negotiations, I don't see any major increases other than maybe health insurance and regular salary changes, than we've heard from the union.
The police accountability law, did that affect your budget in any way?
It sure did. So, you see even in some of those accounts, like drug testing, so every, from now on, every time an officer recertifies, which is every three years, they have to go for drug testing. So, that's about $300, $350 a current officer. Another account, which we just started this year, we just sent, get to send 20% of our officers every year, which is wellness checks, have to go for psychological wellness checks every year, so that's about $200 an officer. We got Kalia, which we're in the process for, which we're working on, you know, that's going to be more fees in the future mandated by the state of Connecticut. So, it's, we're, as this police accountability still continues to unravel, and they had set dates out, fortunately for us, we already had the body cameras and the car cameras, which are going to be a huge cost to most other towns who didn't have them. We're good there, but we're starting to see these other, and they add up, you know, they add up, and the training adds up, the requirements for the training add up. They have a lot of yearly requirements now, where they used to be able to do in the recertification every three years, they haven't changed that, so you're sending officers out for routine sex trafficking, human trafficking training every year, and try to get put that person in three years, but you're still accounting for that, 23 officers, you know, on overtime for training, it adds up for a course. So, yes, the fees are.
That is quite a change, though.
Yeah, the fees are increasing, so, and we're trying to deal with them the best we can.
And those will continue as the sun falls, as they go down this road.
For healthcare, are you on the administrative permission plan with the state?
The administrators are on one plan, and then the.
Partnership.
Partnership, yeah. I think, I know it changed across, but it went back or something.
Yeah, that's the partnership.
Yeah, so, they are in the partnership already, but that's all also set by contract, by the collective bargaining. Any other questions? The only thing left that we have is the capital improvements, and we are asking for two patrol vehicles. Each patrol vehicle is now $54,000, so that's $108,000 to the capital improvements. That has kept us on track, I think it has. For some of you that have been here for a few years, remember what kind of spot we were a couple of years ago, we ended up doing leases, which lease payments carry on for when we're out, and they throw the whole budget process off, you never get caught back up. But we're finally in a place where we're not coming to you and asking for four vehicles or three vehicles. If we sustain the two vehicles, we're, we will be good and really good track for us to continue forward, you know, coming to the council as soon as we can.
We were in trouble, something I remember years ago. Unfortunately, whatever's on the clock, by the time the car sits and idles, you know, it goes off, it's $50,000 on the clock, it's more like $80,000, depending on the vehicle. And some of our vehicles we're using, obviously, for road jobs and whatnot, but, you know, you've got to take in accountability of idle time, wear and tear on that car, for some of you guys that, no vehicles of maintenance and all that, where, you know, what it says and what it is is too ridiculous. But we've been lucky, we've got a good program right now with you guys, and it's working. I think they go backwards.
That's the way it should be done.
Once we get off the rotation, what happens is our maintenance costs skyrocket, and then we get to that conversation, which we've had at the council before, and then it becomes a safety issue, so. But we're finally in a good place, if we can maintain, maintain that line, that would be a great benefit moving forward in the future.
Glad to hear that. Anything else, anybody else?
Just a quick one.
Sure.
Historically, you used to provide us with an inventory of cars and mileage. Is that available this year? Or does it not have?
Yeah, I get that over to the town manager by the end of the week for you, I get that set up right now.
Car vehicle list and mileage and all that, yeah, that's helpful, yeah.
I can tell you the two vehicles that we're looking to replace are over 100,000 miles on them.
Each.
Each, yeah. But I will get that over to you, if you want.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's nice to point.
Right? Nice.
Very nice.
You guys, have a good evening, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Ethan, you want to send them in?
Yeah.
Fire up the.
Thank you.
I think so.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready for them to start, whenever they are?
Oh, whenever you're ready. Good, chief.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. In light of your 30-minute timeline, I promise to keep it brief. Our budget this year is pretty simplistic, and it provides you with some basic information that I'm going to bring up here on the PowerPoint to recap our efforts this year. So, just kind of as an FYI, as we start out, we did some reorganization this year with our command structure, and it provides for a more effective operational efficiency, strengthens the unity of command, and explicitly divides the division of labor so that our company officers in particular know who to turn to for specific issues that they're dealing with in their particular station. So, it's a more formal command structure, and it has seemed to improve the overall working relationship between the command staff and the company officer, as well as the members of all four companies. So, So again, this is a non-monetary item that improves the overall effectiveness of the department. So if you kind of look at what we did over the year, and I got to remind you that when we look at fire department statistics, it's all predicated upon calendar year because that's what we're obligated to do for the federal government. So if you were to compare the calendar year to the fiscal year with regards to responses, you're actually going to see that the numbers, believe it or not, are pretty close. So in 2020, a little over 1,866 calls for service. 544 were fire-related. Doesn't mean that we had 544 fires, so to speak, but they're fire category type of responses, non-EMS. And similar to all departments nationwide, the requests for emergency medical services far outweigh the response to fire apparatus. So again, 1,332. So if you look at the fire response in particular, and this is all predicated upon information that is done after the fact by our fire marshal's office and our information management system, it references the dollars of, let's see, how can I say this? The value of property in this town versus the value that was destroyed by way of fire, hence the dollars saved. So it actually comes out to like 99% property saved that is affected by fire. So it's, again, it just places another emphasis on the fact that we have a pretty well-demonstrated and well-oiled machine operating in the town's fire department. So the next box on the left-hand side, on the bottom, you'll see our average response time. So I just want to kind of explain that, right? So seven minutes and 25 seconds. So that's response time. So that's the time from which the call is dispatched to the units on scene. Now keep in mind that there's nobody in the station, right? So with the exception of the ambulance and saying that it's in quarters, that's a pretty darn good response time for a volunteer fire department. And I've said that over the years, and I don't mean to repeat myself, but for a small community with a volunteer fire department with the strength that we have, that's a really good provision to the taxpayers of this town, a real quick response. So if you look at the overall responses, and we look at this by district, Company One, which is this side of town, 61% of the calls. Company Two, over in the center of Norfolk, at the almost 25%. And then up by the Durn Line, the smallest of the three districts, but also the slowest, a little over 8% of the calls taking place in District Three. So for, again, for the calendar year, the response time analysis, just a quick rap, and it basically shows you that a large percentage of the work, as well as with any fire department, is EMS-related. Brief 10-year history of fire EMS and total calls for service that you see there. And again, if you look at the total calls for service, kind of have flattened out over the last couple of years on fires, you see some drops and some increases. And the same thing holds true in the EMS alarms. So kind of look at what the challenges are to operate the fire department. First of all, we have an aging fleet of apparatus, and I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, right? So if we look at the average age of our engines, our engine tankers, they're 24.4 years old. If you look at our brush trucks, and keep in mind that all our apparatus are maintained in a very well-state of readiness, but the average age of our brush trucks is 42 years old. And our single ladder is 32 years of age. So in fact, you know, it takes money to keep the apparatus up. If I look at the fleet of apparatus and I look back at calendar year 2020, we, between all the apparatus, frontline apparatus, we traveled 48,675 road miles last year. We consumed basically 2,492 gallons of unleaded gas and 6,906 gallons of diesel fuel. If you look at the maintenance costs for our apparatus last year, we spent $65,574 on fire apparatus and $45,778 to maintain the ambulances. I need to emphasize the fact that year-to-date, this year, we spent $51,812 on fire apparatus maintenance and $13,765 on ambulance maintenance. So it does in fact become a challenge as apparatus gets older. Naturally, the cost of maintenance is more important, but the cost of maintenance tends to rise. And I'll just reemphasize the fact that we did apply for a fire grant. It could take up to a year to hear from the federal government for that information. But I'm obligated to follow the NFPA standards. And NFPA 1911 states that safety is of prime consideration when you look at retiring apparatus and keeping apparatus around the road. Apparatus that was built, that was not built to the NFPA standard, which came into place in 2007, and is more than 25 years old, it's suggested that it's retired and not used at all. Apparatus that was built to the standard, but before 1991, but it's less than 25 years old, it's recommended that it be put to the reserve category. So again, you know, we're teetering on that, that fact of how long do we keep our apparatus in service? And again, you know, we do a really good job in preventive maintenance and annual maintenance and testing and keeping that apparatus on the road as best we can. So again, there's an increased cost that you'll see on a continuum for rolling stuff to be maintained. Maintaining response goals, and again, what does that mean? It means, you know, can we maintain the response times as recommended for a volunteer fire department? And I got to tell you this, it's becoming more difficult. Why? Not only is the pandemic having an impact, and I say that wholeheartedly because we have people that don't want to go to calls because of COVID. We had members that could not get vaccinated because they were not medical responders, but they were first responders, but they could not get vaccinated until very recently. So there's been an issue there. So it does in fact, and we've seen this year, our response times gradually get slower. Staffing, you know, we still get the volunteers to apply to be members. We still invest significant amount of money in their physicals and their training. We have eight members participating in firefighter one class right now. It costs us nearly $9,000. Hopefully, they pass and they get on board. But, you know, staffing a volunteer fire department has always been an issue throughout the U.S. We seemed over the last couple of years not to have a big problem, but I can see down the road a problem. So from a long-range strategy, it would be wise down the road to look at a study of what the fire department's going to look like in the next five years. It's something you really, really have to think about. And I'm saying that as a taxpayer. We're continually bombarded with unfunded mandates. And those come from our medical direction through Yale Center for EMS. They come from OSHA or other state and federal agencies. So again, it's what we're required to do that we don't get any money to do with. The next slide gives you a snapshot of where we are in the current fiscal year versus what we're forecasting in the next fiscal year. The next slide actually talks a little bit about what those deviations are. So if you look at the bottom line, the budget increase is 3%. And that's pretty, pretty low when you look at the history of the fire department's budget over the last couple of years. So again, you know, we go from a one to, or a zero to an 8% increase in a variety of the categories. So if you look at those categories, the categories are broken down by the various accounts. You'll see that there's an increase in the personnel account, or 102 and 120. It reflects an increase in part-time salary related costs to insurance, pension, disruptor wages, but more importantly, the number of members taking their annual stipids cash. Materials and supplies, again, a gentle increase related to the cost of doing business, whether it be for supplies or fuel products. In contractual services, increase in telephone costs, maintenance costs. And again, I place the emphasis on the fact of the age of the apparatus versus repairs. Probably unbeknownst to you, but it does reflect a change in contractual services by a slight decrease. We eliminated the oxygen vendor that we had used because we rented oxygen bottles on an annual basis. We eliminated that. How? By purchasing oxygen bottles that the state of Connecticut were selling on the state surplus bid site. You know, why would the state of Connecticut sell new oxygen bottles? It's pretty simple. The state police got out of the business of being first responders statewide. They took all their equipment, oxygen regulators, oxygen cylinders, and put them on the state website. And so what do we typically pay for some equipment on the state website? $50. And Anthony would give you the bottom number of total oxygen bottles that we were able to acquire, but assist us, fire department, assist the ambulance, and assist the PD. And we switched oxygen vendors from going to the present vendor to another vendor that some surrounding departments use for a better cost. So it was kind of a win-win for us. And, you know, we actually, if you calculate the regulators and oxygen bottles that we bought for $50, we're talking about $25,000 worth of equipment for $50. So that's a pretty significant savings. 314, there's an increase in rental costs, as you see, for the lease agreement. That's the lease agreement that's worked up by the town manager and the fire companies. So again, the Board of Fire Commissioners and the chief had no say, and that was a pretty significant increase, and I'm sure you're well aware of that as we speak. Again, 319 and 320 accounts, typical increases for doing business. There was a retraction out of the contractual services, repairs to fire station, and it was realigned with another account for town-wide facility maintenance. And 405 capital outlay, again, provides funding for purchasing or replacement of safety equipment throughout the year. So again, that's kind of a standard, and there's minimal changes there. Any questions on the ambulance budget? There are none. Moving on to count 4225, the ambulance. Again, the ambulance operations budget is an overall increase of 4%. And one thing that you'll probably say to yourself, holy cow, capital, a 253% increase. We go from $37,500 to $13,226, and it's explained here. So again, in the 102, costs for doing business, pay for call for the EMTs and paramedics, pension, payroll, social security, materials and supplies on 202. Again, a lot of disposable supplies to use in EMS. And again, the medications that our paramedics are required to use are mandated by our medical control physician in Yale Center for EMS, also state protocols. So if you look at that significant increase, we were able to upgrade our LifePak 15, monitor the fibrillators, and the cost for that is reflected in that capital outlay. In contractual services, again, funding to support the work that's done by our external vendor that we contract with for apparatus repairs, as well as public works. Contractual services for the BitTech Management Service contract that has a gentle increase, as well as our ambulance billing vendor. Capital outlay, again, technical equipment as it relates to our EMS. So again, on the right-hand side here, I just want to bring up a point. So the second bullet point says there's 473 overlapping incidents. So somebody may say, oh, what is an overlapping incident? So this is an overlapping incident. So right now, the tone goes off, and the apparatus and the ambulance go to a call. Before that ambulance is available for the next call, another call comes in. And maybe another call comes in. So they're simultaneous or back-to-back calls. So in calendar year 2020, nearly 25% of our responses involve overlapping incidents. And this happens frequently. And again, more calls happen during the daytime than the midnights, and more calls happen in the evenings than the midnights. So gently speaking, the day shift is pretty busy. The evening shift is a little slower, and the slowest is the overnight shift, which goes from midnight to 6:00 a.m. But got to remember that multiple calls come in simultaneously, and they got to be handled. And how do we do that? Calling crews or toning out mutual aid responses through MedCom. And I know Chief Lovelace was talking about some of his expenses as it relates to MedCom. So when we need a backup ambulance, if we don't have one available or we don't have a crew available, we depend upon MedCom to capture that mutual aid asset from some surrounding department, if it's not AMR, and dispatch it to North Ramford. Again, 70, you know, nearly 71% of our calls are EMS-related. The next line talks about basic life support versus paramedic calls, medical trauma, cancel and refuse. One thing that we always end up talking about in our budget meeting is collections. And again, we're the victim, just like every other healthcare organization around, with having to take what insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, or the Veterans Administration pays for their set rate that is set by the federal government or is set by the state of Connecticut for the ambulance billing. So, you know, you look at our transports at 921, and the percent collected over on the far right-hand side at, you know, almost 86%. Correction rate, it's good, but, you know, you look at that second column there, total charges, you know, $1.14 million, and you're allowed to bill, you know, 50% of that. And what do you collect out of that, you know? A little over half a million. So again, if you look at what's collected, and then you look at the subsidy that's in the budget for operating the EMS, as I always say, it's a pretty cheap venture to provide EMS at the level of what we do here compared to some other locations. So, you know, the money that the town provides us with either through CIP or our operating budget really allows us to do many things to keep the operations effective and efficient. When you budget and use your money wisely, and I say that with a lot of feelings because we just don't spend money to spend money. We spend money wisely. So spending the money wisely, this is what we've been able to do. You know, we've replaced our, we're in the process of replacing our rescue airbag system. We're able to trade in what we have now and keep the gauges, keep the airlines, but change out the bags because they do have a life expectancy. You know, we've been able to replace PPE over the years, it's a 10-year cycle. Replace my vehicle, but repurpose my former vehicle to the fire marshal. Repurpose the vehicle that was used by Emergency One, where we replaced it with the squad. Get it repurposed to the fire marshal as well. We've been able to replace, completely replace our inventory of SDVA cylinders over the last couple of years. We've replaced our fire hose. Recently replaced the hose, kind of last in line- Recently replaced the hose kind of last in line on our brush trucks. We did the upgrades to the LightPak. We upgraded our ambulance stretcher. You know, we issued decon equipment to our engine companies because preventing cancer in firefighter is the number-one concern of the health of emergency workers today, just from the products and combustion. So we have a system in place where, no matter what type of fire you're at, you decon your equipment, including your PPE yourself, before you go back to the station. So you don't secondarily contaminate the station, or you don't tertiary contaminate your vehicle, or even further down the road, bring contaminants back home to your family or to your home. We've instituted a different way of giving epinephrine at the BLS level and using glucometers at the EMT level. Again, an opportunity afforded to all services by our medical direction. And actually, by using amples of epi, it saves us money versus using pre-filled syringes, which are quite costly today. I'll talk more about the fire training simulator, roof simulator, down to fire training center in a second. We have issued ballistic helmets, vests, and bleeding control equipment to our units. It's interesting to note that on the news last night, they had that mass shooting in Boulder, Colorado, and you saw the individual that allegedly caused the issue being taken away from the scene with blood dripping down his right leg by a police officer and a firefighter, okay, and a firefighter. Why? Because the firefighter had his ballistic vest on and his ballistic helmet. They're integral in those type of responses. So we provide our personnel with the necessary equipment to engage in those critical incidents where time is so, so important. We worked with the PD and Next Gen to revise our response protocols this year. We've, again, upgraded some of our extrication equipment to battery-operated versus hydraulic, which is the state of the art. With all the decon and PPE that we've obtained through the federal and state avenues, we actually modified our facility, storage facility at the company for from one room with an eighteen-foot ceiling to two rooms, were dropped downstairs. And we basically increased our capacity by a hundred percent. We finished our installation of tires on apparatus. We purchased video-based intubation equipment, mainly because of COVID. Put battery-operated hand tools in place. And most importantly, we've engaged the services of an outside professional behavioral health services provider to provide services to all of our members. I'm proud to say that we probably exceeded all other departments in this town by providing inclusiveness and diversity training for all of our members. We hired a fire service-based individual to conduct this training that was administered over at the high school auditorium, well, well-attended. There was a family that sent me an email last year and basically said, hey, listen, you know, my family member was a firefighter in another state and died in the line of duty, and we're from the area, and we want to give you guys some money to do something with. So we put a team together and said, hey, listen, you know, we have this pot of money, six thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, and what do you think we could do to enhance our training facility? So the team came up with the idea, developed the concept, engineered this, and constructed a roof simulator that is down at the training facility to no cost to the town. All the hours were donated by members who are, you know, close to being experts in the construction field. We were assisted by employees of Public Works as well. So again, a great addition to our training facility. And we continue to work on a new project based upon the money that was remaining from last year to build on to our training facility. With regards to apparatus reserve at the Board of Fire Commissioners level, they have removed the request to replace Engine One, and that was a one-of-five payments at a hundred and forty thousand. And the apparatus reserve is the lease payment for Engine Three and the lease payment for the ambulance, and both are in the midst of construction. I would expect Engine Three to come in sometime late summer, early fall, and the ambulance in about three to four months. There is no capital request, no CIP request in the budget for the fire department this year. You know, I could talk all night about the trials and tribulations of COVID and, you know, what we had to do to keep our operations sustained, how it affected training. You know, if you wanted to talk about that, please, give me a call. But, you know, we sincerely thank the town council, town manager, our commissions for the support that they give us annually to make our job easier. But more importantly, when it comes to the financing of the fire department, to allow us to meet our operational objectives. As FYI, at the end of April, we have put a stop to the drive-bys that have been in large numbers since the onset of COVID. And I can't tell you that the number of responses that we get back on our Facebook page or emails or telephone calls, just the amount of gratuity that our taxpayers have said, what a simple drive-by is done for the family, whether it be a holiday or somebody's birthday. Just bringing them a present, just to see the expressions on the kids' faces is tremendous. So I don't have anything else. I said I would kind of keep it brief. And if you have any questions, I know we'll be back at least two more times to talk about the budget in specific nature. But if you have any questions, the commissioners are here, and I'll address any issues that you may have.
Chief, on the slide you had with last year, or excuse me, the current year being nine oh seven, I think it was.
Which slide is that, Tom?
I think it's the next couple of slides is one that, right there, nine oh seven. Why does it say eight ninety-two here? I'm just curious. Is there something that's...
I'm sorry, which one?
The FYI twenty twenty-one, or excuse me, FY twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
Says nine oh seven. The book says eight ninety-two, unless I'm missing something or something else needs to be added to it.
Yeah, I was going off some document, Anthony.
All right, I was just curious. All right.
Anybody?
Question. What is the difference between hundred percent self-pay insured versus other insured?
Yeah. So if you or I get transported to the hospital, and it's a paramedic call, and if we have no insurance, we're responsible one hundred percent for that bill. Yep.
But when it's an insured, that's why I was confused, because it says hundred percent self-pay uninsured, and then it says a hundred percent self-pay insured. Does that mean they are insured, but they're just...
Yep, stand by. So there's a hundred percent self-pay insured. You have some type of insurance where you may be responsible for copay, and then a hundred percent self-pay uninsured. So there's nothing.
So for the insured, are they, is their insurance, their insurance is paying some of it?
Yeah.
But then they're responsible for a total charge?
Correct. It could be eighty, twenty, whatever their plan calls for. And again, you know what? When, there used to be this thing called DRGs, Diagnosis Related Groups in Insurance. So depending upon how the document, in this case, how the ambulance report was written and then how the ER report is followed up, when it's reviewed by the insurance company, they make a determination whether or not you or I needed an ambulance to get to the hospital. And if they, even if we, no, we called nine-one-one, the ambulance went, even if they say, listen, you didn't need an ambulance, we're not paying. That's how it works.
For the allowable costs where there's not a hundred percent collection, what is the largest reason for that? Is it just the insurance companies are denying that or challenging that the cost is?
Yeah, and you know what? Listen. I wish I could explain the ambulance billing to you when we see the numbers come back of no response from client. So in our contract with our billing service, you know, they get billed multiple times based upon a cycle, and you're only allowed to bill up to a certain period. So that's why getting, getting the report done is so important, getting the billing information out is so important. But, you know, on a regular basis, I'll get documents from our ambulance billing service, like a cumulative report by the month, okay, you know, and there's multiple pages. People don't pay the bills. They do not. And, you know, granted, we have a collection agency that follows it up, but it's not like AMR where they have a collection department in-house where, you know, there's four people that didn't pay their bill today, and I'm calling them up or I'm sending somebody to their house to make that collection work.
Is the billing service reimbursed by like a percentage of what they collect, or how do they...
It is four, maybe four percent, four percent of collections, right?
I think it went down.
Yeah, I believe it's four percent of what they collect. Yep. And actually, that's not a lot. There's collection agencies on EMS side that collect up to eight to nine percent of what they receive.
Three point two-five.
Three point two-five? Okay.
Is this consistent with years past? It's pretty...
Yeah, you know, it's disheartening when you look at the total that was billed, what you're able to collect, and what is paid. And again, you know, I have said to the council before, we operate a little bit differently in our collections through collecting the money that offsets the total amount of what our EMS budget is. So the money just doesn't go into the general fund, right? Where most of the other towns around us, when they collect, it just goes into the general fund. So, you know, they say that, oh yeah, you know, we collected a million-two this year. Okay, you may have collected a million-two, but what did it cost you to provide that service? What did the town put out to make that service work? So again, as I've said, you know, we're an old community. Our clients, our Medicaid, Medicare clients, they pay less for the transport. Therefore, we collect less, and unfortunately, it's, you know, that's our clientele.
Have you had added mandates that require the increase in terms of contractual services? Do you have more mandates this year added that you have to follow?
Are we adding?
In other words, has the state required giving you more mandates or the federal government? Because you're saying that you've had costs increase because of all these mandates. Have you had more mandates?
The mandates come down from our medical director. So if I understand it right, so from the EMS side, right? So they could tell us in July, we're going to use XYZ medication. And XYZ medication may cost this amount. Guess what? You're responsible for it, and you can't bill for it because the billing is captured into the type of call. There's an ALS one and ALS two type of call base. So it's not like equipment is itemized in a bill. So, yeah, and we have, you have no say.
And then on the oxygen cylinders, aren't they requalifiable?
They are. Yep. So you bring up a good point. So we used to, and I know we're live on TV, so I'm not going to use any vendor's name. So we did have a purchase order with a vendor that refilled our oxygen, and we also had the same vendor on another PO, which we leased the oxygen cylinders from. So by purchasing the oxygen cylinders, we eliminate the lease, and we found a less expensive and responsible vendor that will fill the oxygen at a cheaper cost. It also gives us a larger inventory of cylinders. Yeah.
Okay.
Chief, I just got one quick question. On the professional development.
Yep. On the fire or the ambulance budget, Tom?
Uh, it's the fire.
Yep.
So going back, I mean, we don't have much of a history here, but it looks like every other year, the training cost or professional development cost goes down. In eighteen, nineteen, it was sixteen, six-eighty-eight, and then nineteen and twenty, it went down to six thousand. This year, we're projected eighteen thousand. So it may not be as simple as I'm explaining it, that's why I'm asking, but... And then twenty-three thousand is requested. My, I know a lot of the certifications and stuff are every few years or whatever, but going just simply looking at this stuff, it looks like we'd be headed for a year with less professional development. What am I missing?
Yep, you're absolutely right. It's a keen eye there. So this past year, with the exception of the firefighter one class that we have sent people to now, we had minimal expense in training because of COVID. All classes were canceled. But Anthony, you want to talk about the cyclic effect here?
I'm sorry, Dan.
The cycle effect on professional development?
Well, in the case of like the emergency medical training courses, it's a two-year cycle. So as Chief mentioned, you might have a year where very few people are... Granted, it's spread over the whole spectrum, but it just goes in waves. You might have a new initial class every couple of years for EMR. We do have an EMR now as we speak. There's nothing second to reach, people in that group. So those don't happen every year. They do kind of fluctuate as the membership requires them. So every other year, we may have a new EMR course, emergency medical responder, just a step below the EMT. Same with EMT class. You might get a bunch of people coming in, you need EMT training, some that don't want EMT training. So as the population change and membership changes, your training needs will kind of mirror those. You might, and as Chief mentioned, also acquire one class. You know, and sometimes it's, we try to have them in-house. We tried to try to tell things, but he's said in Ramford in the past, and that was pretty beneficial, develop a good relationship. But some of those other towns, because they're mainly career departments, don't want to pay the instructors and create the overtime cost, where our guys were paid at a minimal rate. So now we're forced to send firefighter one students out. A bunch of them going to Middlesex, some of them going out to the valley. And that's why there's, again, there's cyclical costs. That new members come in that need the training, they'll get trained, and next year, there might be nobody. So it's not, it's not an even plus, oh, kind of thing.
Right. So did you just, it would make a lot of sense, but so is this like a COVID effect too? Were there people that needed to be retrained this year that had to be pushed off till next year? And that's what's driving that up?
The state put a moratorium on expiration dates because of that.
Okay, thank you.
They extended them up.
Chief, I said before, qualifiable, not fillable.
Pardon?
You understood what I said, that the cylinder is requalifiable?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so...
I just wanted to make sure, because you started talking about filling, I'm thinking...
Yeah. Yeah, just want to pump up the expiration date.
Hypostatic testing, you talking about?
Yeah.
It's a five-year window to hypothetically test the oxygen bottles. The ones we got through the state, as the chief mentioned, were majority of them from twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, and twenty fifteen. So the twenty fifteens would have needed to be hypothetically tested. In fact, the new vendor that we're using is actually offered to buy those off them for his inventory. So it's going to be, as Chief mentioned, the savings of over forty-five hundred dollars a year on the lease cost alone, the filling cost. We're going from like eighteen change, we're still down to like ten change. So it's not going to set the world on fire.
Right.
But it saves.
But you purchased a whole lot, you know, a lot of cylinders for fifty, for fifty dollars.
Hundred and fifty cylinders, a hundred and thirty regulators. Yeah.
Yeah, you can't, you can't retest that.
No, you can't.
Cylinders. I just wanted to make sure I understood all that.
Yeah, yeah. It was one of those deals that you couldn't leave on the table.
Anybody else? Okay, guys, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Marolla starts it, you have two sheets on your desk tonight. This is where we are currently in the big picture. With the CIP page, the items that were submitted, the items that the manager has put forward. And the front page of the budget, which shows that as we speak now, it's about a point six six mil increase walking in the door, which is, as Chief Lovelace noticed, probably the lowest starting point we've had. So there's some numbers here that are kind of, if you notice, I brought the fund balance back down to three fifty. There's room there. There's also, as you mentioned, as you heard in the audit report last year, some fund balance surplus, if you want to do another lot of fund balance capital appropriations. There's obviously some room there. I did speak with Representative Candelaure as it relates to the ECS money. You'll notice that ECS is seven point three million identical to last year. We had been told last year that we were about a million dollars higher than we're supposed to be based on the new ECS formula, and they were ratcheting down about a hundred and twenty-five thousand per year. Well, as you can tell, they didn't do that. And when I talked to Vinnie, he says that this may not be the final number. So that ratcheting that they told us last year about may still come to be. So again, this is where we are, you know, starting this being the book we're printing up for the public hearing and the first meeting in April. I just wanted to give you a little sheet, tell you where we are currently. And again, the books will be out in time for that.
Okay. Yeah, next is Public Works. Good for you.
Good evening all. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm going to make up the short fall time here. My PowerPoint presentation got zapped when I walked in the door. Budget, you know, we'll start right off. Listen, my increase is four point two eight, and all of that is in the front page of employees. And I'll explain that to you and then go through the rest of the budget. This year, I have put in for an arborist for the crew. And reasons for that is a few things. One, we used to have an arborist on staff, and we do need a few licenses to be operating the way we do. And also for, we need supervisory pesticide license. So that all comes in the arborist package. And, you know, currently, the last few years, as we all know, we've been spending money on a lot of tree work. I think I could reduce that a little bit. In the last year alone, and these are not hard numbers, they're guessy numbers, but we spent around a hundred and fifty thousand to... Yeah, we spent around a hundred and, yeah, about a hundred and fifty thousand just in contractor work. Now, that was just tree cutting. That has nothing to do with grinding. We ground last year twice. We still have a lot of trees that need to be removed. We do have property in town, our parks and stuff, that we haven't even gotten into yet, which is a major project. Not even sure how we're going to do that yet. But for the most part, that's the reason for the increase. I didn't ask for a superintendent this year because honestly, I think that this is much more important. I mean, as much as I need to help, this would go a long way.
So if you have an arborist, you don't need tree cutting service?
Well, I'm not saying we're never going to need it. We probably, you know, let's not have another storm. But there are going to be some jobs we probably would have to hire some kind of...
Well, because, the only reason I'm asking is because I see the tree cutting service dollar amount was cut out of your budget because you put the arborist in, which... So we don't have to allocate anything for tree cutting service?
Well, I took it out of that. I think we're getting to a point where I think if we have one, someone that's doing it all day long, every day...
So this arborist would be the one that would be cutting the trees then?
Yeah. And also my capital I put in for a bucket truck, we see to get up higher. Our problem with our, the biggest problem we have is that our bucket's only forty feet.
So that's why you have to contract out because you can't reach?
Most of the big stuff, we can't get it. So we would be selling our truck and buying a seventy-five footer so we can get up over the wires. That's the main problem that we have.
Seventy-five is good enough? I thought everybody else's ninety feet or plus.
No, we're seventy-five, and that's got the elevator on it. That's up and over the wires. That's the main thing we're trying to do. And again, there's going to be, I'm sure there's going to be stuff out there that we have to hire out, but we've been going kind of back and forth with that anyway. Our budget for tree cutting is forty thousand dollars for the last, I booked three, I'm going to say three years, I'm guessing on that. But we've never, we've always gone over, well, over, we're going to be over a hundred thousand again this year just in tree cutting. And that's not including any of the grinding that has to take place after that. We have a mountain of chips, so... But that's the major increase in the budget. I mean, most of the other stuff is, really didn't touch it. Salt prices are all staying the same, all that, the technical supplies, of course, and all the uniforms and stuff go up for the one guy. That's an increase in the budget. Construction materials is not up much. The fuel, the fuel and diesel, that went up slightly. Now, my numbers might be different than everybody else, but I added the gross sales tax in there too, because we do have to pay that. And I don't think that was in our original number given to us. The motor, the regular hydraulic fluids and all that are just up slightly.
Fran, and then heating fuel, you had, you're projecting eighteen thousand this year, but yet you put a decrease for next year. What?
Well, you know why? Because when we did the projected, we were way into the year. So, and even another number in there is a higher number, but we're going to be over on propane this year now.
Okay, because I was wondering, because everybody else puts an increase, now I know it should have an increase.
Yeah. No, well, the projections are, were done months ago. Even the overtime one, it looks kind of, I think it was overtime we were talking about today. We were at, yeah, the overtime, I put in for a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Well, when we were doing the budget, it was just before they were predicting that last storm. You know, we know how much it costs for a storm, but then the storm may come. But we had already done the budget, so you'll see stuff like that in there. The maintenance stuff, you know, the maintenance is going really good. I mean, we did over two, I think it was two hundred and fifty requests. Now, that's not including jobs, like we did, like we replaced a boiler at town hall. Those are just requests for service. It was like, and that's one person doing all those requests, plus jobs. So it's going good, but it's, they're still coming in rapidly. We are converting a lot of stuff to LED lights. We'll do it now. The light bulb changes. Try to change a room if we can. Utilities pretty much hold themselves. Equipment maintenance is working out with the money that we're getting. We have a lot of money in tires this year. That's because we have the fire department's tires. They did their change, we put their tires. So we use the, so that really is, all rear tires, brand new on there. Other contractual. So that's, the well monitoring is still the dump. We're still obligated to check the wells over there, which is decreasing every year, correct?
It's decreasing for the next twenty years.
My weather service guardrails, we're going to be doing a capital project on guardrails probably next year. We have a couple of issues coming up. But that Totucket Road is, we've got a lot of work over there to do. It's just, it's aging on us. The tree cutting service, I did, we did cut that. Keep our fingers crossed. Water sampling for PW, that's our, the MS four. That's for the public works site. And then we have the MS four for our, where we discharge water out of our catch bases. That's, we have a contractor that does all that sampling for us. Stump grinding is going to be continually in there. That's it on there.
Anthony, I got a question. That account that I asked you about in the last meeting, the maintenance account? What does that fall under currently?
It's in the capital, we won't see it here. It's in the capital project fund. I was going to put it in your next agenda packet that I brought for you.
Okay. Is it possible to have that moved over under Fran if everybody else agrees with the stipulation that it's only used on town-owned properties?
Right now, it's in, it's in the capital project fund, there's the equipment, the maintenance reserve. We have it under, we have an equipment maintenance account that will be used, let's say, for, in lieu of doing service contracts on calculators, something like that, if that's later break, you buy it out of this little maintenance reserve. So we have a subitem out of that same facility maintenance reserve now. Forty-one thirty-six means it's general government based, if anybody has access to it. You could certainly put it for a minimum.
Because I think the intention, and any of my counterparts, please feel free to correct me, but the intention was to, you know, keep up on the town properties so that we don't run into some of the issues that we've had over the years as far as paint, repair, that sort of stuff. And that's why I had asked about it last meeting, to see, you know, where we are with that balance and where the money's been going. So that's why, you know, Franny basically, you know, takes care of a lot of stuff in town. And I think, I think if we put it under him, you know, I think, I think you'd see it used wisely.
You'd have better supervision of the money. All it takes is a motion to move it over.
Yeah, so I guess...
Why don't you just put the caveat that all expenses are declared by Fran? Send money into the account, if that's what you're trying to get to. I mean, so far this year, we've had the hits where the buildings, fire department buildings that didn't go through Fran, outside repairs for doors, things like that.
See, that's kind of what I'm concerned about because it went to the fire department buildings, which we don't own. And the intention...
Well, that was part of the lease though. That was last year, the budget time. It was in the fire budget, and it was specifically moved, taken out of the fire budget, according to this pot of money, to be covered by this pot of money.
So that's something that we're asking Franny to manage now?
I'd like to see Franny manage it because I think, I think, you know, we talked about, you know, separation of duties and, you know, these guys have a lot. They're wearing a lot of different hats. I think if we put it under Franny, you know, we would see, we would see it go to its best use possible, is basically what I'm getting at. You'd see things get painted, you'd see things get fixed and maintained, because that was a big concern of ours last year.
But we're not asking Franny to do all of that work. We're asking her to manage the funds. Like the doors that fix that company too, they hired somebody. So, not that we want Franny to write more purchase orders, but, you know, it'd be, yeah, it'd be a little more cleaner.
And I've run this by Franny, and he, you know, he doesn't seem to have a problem with it. Feel free to add anything you want, Fran.
So Anthony, would that be under three twenty account we could move that money to?
No, it's in the capital project capital reserve fund.
Yeah, if we want to take that money out of there and put it in Fran's budget.
So Anthony, just really quick...
I don't think you want to do that. I think you want, you want Fran to oversee it. So just make a motion in this council means that all expenditures out of this townwide facility maintenance reserve have to go through the public works director.
Why are we putting it there instead of, if we want to put it under other contractual in Fran's budget?
Because it's not solely Fran's budget. It could be anything, it could be a library.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
So this is the capital project here, it covers everything.
It's a maintenance, it's a maintenance budget. It's a maintenance budget item. Fran does a lot of maintenance.
Capital.
Fran does a lot of maintenance throughout the town.
Right.
Why can't we take that money and just put it in Fran's maintenance budget?
Because it lapses, in the general fund, it'll lapse June thirty, and the capital project fund, if you can accumulate, if you don't spend the whole fifty thousand in one year, it just stays in the capital project fund.
Okay, I could see.
It just accumulates. General fund appropriation will lapse June thirty.
So we just make a motion that Fran...
Yeah, just make the motion that you want all expenditures out of the capital townwide facility maintenance reserve to be going through the public works director's office.
I think part of the idea when we talked about that originally was to create it and over time, use it and maintain certain things. And that'll also build a history on what is, what is annual cost of this function is, you know?
And that's, Anthony made a good point there. If we put it in Fran's budget at the end of the year classes.
Right.
Where if we keep it in the capital, it runs year to year.
That is a good point. Just out of curiosity.
You got an atta boy on that one.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, how much, how much did we spend out of that account?
To date, four thousand three sixty-six point eighty-four. We got forty-five thousand six thirty-three left in there.
So only four thousand out of forty?
Out of the fifty.
Out of the fifty.
Yeah, but fifty, and you spent forty-three hundred so far. So again, we did it in Fran's budget, that forty-five thousand, it lapsed come June thirty, where now you can...
But I also think it's, but I also think it's an account that we want to use.
Oh, yeah.
Right? We don't want to just try to, you know, let it pile up.
Oh, yeah.
I want, I would have, I'd be happy today if you told me we used all of it. And we painted, and we fixed railings, and we did all kinds of stuff. Because that's, that's the kind of stuff that keeps these buildings in working order.
Park record again, or backdoor fixed?
No. I talked to her today about that. Get some numbers. It's like even our dumpster thing out there is all falling apart now.
Right.
They must have dropped the dumpster monitor or something, I don't know what, but, you know, there's usually not money there for stuff like that.
So is that the three oh two account you're saying?
Negative. It's in the four twenty-seven fund, which is the capital reserves.
Which is not in our budget book.
Not in the budget book.
Yeah, we can't, we can't see it anyplace in here because I've been looking for it.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying the motion that we have to make, so...
The motion will be, you want anything that goes through the townwide facility maintenance reserve account that was established in the twenty twenty-one budget year.
So can you just write this memo off and include it in the...
There you go. Thank you.
So Anthony, are we allowed to see this account?
Yeah, I'm going to make a sheet for Ron. It's me.
Yeah, yeah. He did. He said he would do that. And I just jumped ahead on him because I just wanted to ask these questions, but...
There's been three expenditures. One to company, reimbursed company one, I'm sorry, company two and three. And then the recycling building needed a new lock on the mechanism for the door. So those are the three expenditures so far out of that.
At the front of this bill.
So, so as money is spent out of that account, should, should, should we get a report on that?
Sure. I can have to give a monthly report.
I don't know, just so we know that we're maintaining.
You'd like the maintenance report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can certainly make that part of my monthly report. Not a problem.
Thanks, Anthony.
Just one, one note, I forgot. The public works salaries are, those are, there's no, we have another year on our contract, so these numbers are, you know, we're not in negotiations this year.
Okay, so they're...
But they still go on contractually.
They're up now. These are the numbers for July first.
They didn't have to estimate. You have hard numbers because you're in the contract.
And then the other note I just want to make is on the capital, you know, that twenty-five thousand that you gave me for...
Small equipment?
Last year, and I did fund it through the money that we saved, it is a lifesaver. That's for small tools and stuff.
The smaller equipment?
All that small stuff that, you know, before we used to request a couple, but it really, you know, even in the winter, you know, snow blower goes, we could just, we can get one, and it's, it works out well.
So the three, three hundred and ten thousand in your equipment reserve?
Yes.
Is that to pay for all existing leases?
No. Yeah, yeah, there's one lease left.
For how much?
The last lease is... The last lease is the last payment for the back truck. It's a hundred and thirty-six, no, a hundred and thirty-seven, well, a hundred and thirty-six thousand. And then I put in to replace the bucket truck at a hundred and seventy thousand. That was for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay. So out of the three-ten, one seventy is for the bucket truck?
Yes.
And then approximately one forty for the last payment on the?
One thirty-six, zero three three point two seven. That's the last payment for the back truck. And then Kurt's here, he's gonna, he's gonna run through the road program real quick, because this might be the last time he ever does it, so. Leaves out a good note.
All right, thank you.
Unless you have more questions for me.
We've had a road program for over thirty years, and what we tried to do was set up the annual program, what we're gonna do throughout town based upon available budgets and, and needs. And we have a, we have a software program that where we monitor the conditions of the roads, the age of the roads, when, when we've last made improvements to them. And we come up with a, a listing of roads that we need certain work on, and we have basically four components that we look at. Chip sealing of the roads, which is the stone, the oil and the stone chip that we put on, the more rural roads, really roads that aren't built, built up. And we've currently had a projected budget of about a hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars a year for chip sealing. That gives us about five miles of roads per year. Then we look at the paving component, milling and paving, and sometimes it's actual grinding up the road and then reconstructing and repaving it. The budget between four hundred and fifty thou, four hundred thousand and five hundred thousand dollars a year. And depending, we can normally get about a mile to a mile and a half of milling and repaving a road. And if we have to grind it up and reconstruct it, we get significantly less. But again, currently in the budget, we generally ask for four to five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's sort of what we've ended up with. We could spend a little more, if there's money available, we can find the, the need for. But it's always been a balance over the years, trying to come up with what's a workable number for a routine number to carry year after year. We're gonna have to adjust that down the road for inflation and the cost of materials going up. But, and then we do crack sealing, which we just spend twenty-five thousand dollars a year with a contractor and seal the cracks on paved roads. That's a very good bank for the buck that we get. It's, it seals the road, keeps the waters out, and it's a very low-cost operation. And then we budget twenty thousand dollars a year for misplaced drainage throughout town, that Fran and I come up with on a, on a has-needed basis. In addition, which we haven't put into this year, you know, sometimes we have to, you know, we're, we look to do something routine and regular because it helps public works from a planning perspective. We try to do the, going early on the road work in, in April, May, and try to get most of the roads paved by June. It works pretty good for his schedule. And then we do the chip seal, generally July or August. So it works, it keeps his, his guys working and, and planning ahead. The one thing I'll warn you about is what, the worst thing we can do is have blips year after year, have the one year, because we ran through it in the past, where you have a tough year and you don't do much of anything for a couple of years, and then you try to do catch-up. It's a difficult operation from a public works perspective, because you're trying to do so mu, when you're catching up, you're, you're just inundated and you can't always get it done in that year. What we found is the regular routine work budget works very good year after year after year. And then we have to catch up if there's bond monies available, then we do a bigger project or do more road paving. But, but in, in this year's budget, you know, we have the hundred seventy thousand dollars for the chip sealing, four hundred thousand for overlay pavement work, and then the twenty and twenty-five thousand for drainage and for crack sealing. Again, I, I will say that if you're looking and you, you feel you could put a little more money, we could always take, the one seventy for chip sealing, if, if two hundred was available, public works would take it, we could find the work, there's definitely the work there to do it. And if the four hundred thousand, there's another hundred thousand dollars. You're looking for a place to put it, that's always a good, good spot to put it, because you get a pretty good bag for the buck on the, on the pavement. The one thing I will point out too is if you go through town and you look, sometimes the worst roads, it's, it's, we don't work on the, do the worst first, because that's, we sort of go on, on a different theory. We try to save the roads where we don't have to grind them up and repave them, try to seal them, crack seal them, and maybe overlay them. It's a lot cheaper to do that than to put all your money into a bad road. A bad road can wait a little bit until times are better, or maybe there's some bond money to do that type of work. But we found over the years, and it's, it's a proven practice, you know, keep them, keep the road sealed and then try to spend, do the routine maintenance and avoid the big expenses of reconstructing a road. So that's, that's pretty much in a nutshell. That's, again, we've been doing it for a lot of years now. The one thing I, I, pardon?
The bridges.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna bring up. One thing I want to throw in there is over the past thirty years, we've pretty much repaired, reconstructed most of the bridges throughout town. Some of them are starting to show their age, and we've put, come together with a budget for bridge deck resurfacing and repairs. We identified a half dozen bridges in town that need, you know, the road surface, the asphalt has to come off, the Bedbury waterproofing under that, which protects the concrete structure, needs to come out and get, need to get resealed and repaved. And there's various problems, some of the concrete has to be repaired, it's falling, there's broken pieces off that they need to be repaired in order to protect the bridge, and, you know, it's, it's just like protecting the roof of your, your house, you know? Keep everything sealed, dry, and you protect that structure for a lo, longer duration, rather than letting it, the, the water with all the chemicals get into it and eats away into concrete, and you gotta replace the whole structure down the road, trying to avoid all that. So we've got, we've come up with a preliminary budget of a little under a half a million dollars to do a half dozen bridges. Doesn't mean it has to be done this year. We've got, but we've got to start planning for it, start budgeting it over the next few years. And it can be done in chunks, it can be done in a way where we build up a pot of money and try to do more, more of the bridge decks in one given year. But we're, we're trying to identify it and we'll keep bringing that, bringing it forward to you so you're aware of it. At some point, again, it's money well-spent, money well-spent. Rather than replacing a bridge, we're protecting it and we're protecting it, extending the life of a bridge.
Is that outside contractor or?
That's outside contractor. We got numbers, there's a, you know, I think the capital regional council governments have a consortium bid, and we had somebody look at the bridges last year and gave, gave us preliminary numbers on it, and that's what we developed our budget based upon.
Is that, does that qualify for any of the state aid programs?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a replacement. And the state, the state does.
It's a maintenance item, yeah. And then that's, we got a lot of information, the state does biennial inspections of town bridges. So we worked off of that with the, with the contractor to come up with the estimate.
Out of the six bridges, I don't know, like, say the worst two or whatever, how, how much longer do we have with those before we run into a situation where we may have to do a replacement rather than a repair?
We've got, we've got time, I mean, it's not like we'd have to do it next year or this year, I mean, but we've got to start planning it, I would say, within the next few years.
I mean, if we put together a six-year plan and we did one a year.
Right.
That could be done.
Okay.
Absolutely, you know, it just, it, there's a need there, and if we ignore the need, we're gonna pay for it many times over down the road.
We should really, if we don't do, start something this year, we should really start it next year. We got a few that gotta be, you know, we gotta, we gotta start getting on them.
What do you think the average cost would be for that, each one?
It all goes by the size of it, you know.
Yeah, and the need, some are in better shape than others, some need less work.
Like downtown East Path, David Lane down there, we got a bridge that needs, it's very small, but it's an older bridge, hasn't, well, we did, we did some work, but it needs to be resurfaced.
Just, just a ballpark, to give you, you know, just ballpark numbers, Valley Road is, we identified about twelve thousand dollars worth of improvements. Minor things, just a little bit that has to be done there. Mill Road, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of work.
And that, that, that's as old as I've been here. And we got the one on Auger Road, it was done just before I got here. So they're, they're getting there, Totucket Road. And basically, it's a, you know, you, you mill it and you just get down to the, the concrete deck surface, make the repairs and put the membrane back on it.
Yeah, but, but there's also some concrete work that has to be done in there.
Anthony, in this year's capital budget, didn't we allot money for, you know, the steps and concrete work, the, the curbing by Town Hall and stuff?
Just the front entrance, right.
Just the front steps, yeah.
No, I thought we did the, did we do the ramp?
That's the.
That's the front step.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're, I'm looking at that, I, well, I'm getting quotes, there's a couple of different ways of looking at how, one was, the hundred fifty was a complete replacement. And I don't know that that has to happen, I think it needs a much bigger repair job done to it. So I, I am talking to some companies, trying to get some numbers together now on that.
I thought we had something in it for the front.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is it.
Okay, anything else for Fran? Thank you.
Thank you.
Time, yeah. That one? You feel left out, you didn't even ask me a question.
Me?
He asked everybody else questions.
That's the great job.
Here you promised it's a PowerPoint.
Yeah.
At least they hand that.
Next year, next year I'll have one.
At least, you want to bar the fire chief's hand up, show you what you need to do?
I'm good.
All right, next, next I have questions on two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget, I don't know. Amongst ourselves, I guess.
I think we kind of asked and we went through.
Anybody? No, 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 no. Okay. Motion, adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Walter Gold.
Walter.
Before nine o'clock, Bobby, you did a good job.